Meeting. Down of twenty-three at seven P M. For the record, Adrian Black will not be here this evening. He's at one of his daughter's functions. Let us know about that ahead of time. Call.
Chief.
Present.
Peters.
Present.
Dockery.
Present.
Collins.
Present.
Blackwell absent.
By sleeping. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Looking for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I make the motion to approve the agenda, but as presented, as long as the students identify their name in their book classroom.
Mr. Doctor, are there some government students out there tonight? If you would please stand up, obviously the same time, then one at a time state your name. But Daniel.
David.
Children's.
Carter. All right, thank you. Do I hear second on the move?
I'm saying.
Motion by Dr. Second by Mr. Chief to approve the agendas presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name is the ice habit. Is there anybody in the chamber tonight that has something to talk about that's not on the agenda through this evening? All right. First agenda. Looking for motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from the May first meeting two thousand twenty-three.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from May first, twenty twenty-three. Second.
Motion by Chief, second by Collins to approve the minutes from May first, two thousand twenty-three, so city council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name is the ice habit. I'd be those pay. Does anybody have any questions this evening on bills payable? Mr. Chief. Mr. Collins.
I'm done before the meeting.
Mr. Dr.
I have a few.
Okay.
Always cleaning bills up to nine hundred and forty-five dollars a month. Don't the contracts original eight hundreds thirty forty a month?
Yeah, it's a year of increase.
About. We're lucky to twenty-five percent increase down here. Could you give me a copy of contract on re-renewed that one? Iowa DOT material testing fifteen hundred and sixty-eight dollars seventeen cents. Are those refundable from the contractor or are we on the line for payments?
Yeah, a couple of years ago, the DOT changed. They used to do this for you for free. They would test certain materials like rock, concrete, sand at the DOT materials office. It's unfortunately a value.
Iowa State Fire Marshal for four thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars sixty-eight cents. That was for inspecting the Y for daycare center. Should we be on the book of all of it because the board owns half that building? And the Y is running it and they're the ones that are going to have daycare. Should that be split?
I assumed it was set up that way, but.
Yeah. We will invoice more stats schools for fifty percent of this cost.
Okay. Bill, so we know. A Russell construction for YMCA, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Oh, paying retainage. Have we or the school district formally approved the improvements there? What was the vote for? Well, several things, but we're paying them retainage. Nobody don't pay retainage. Done.
I think we still have one standing bill for the routine. This is the second to final payment on the contract as I understand it.
There's retainage in the bill. Were you checking to that? Pull that bill up to get an answer from it? Waste Commission, Scott County. Three hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighteen cents, the bill said for loose material. Don't we get our roll-up dumpsters free as part of their contract with service provider or is this something different?
It's for nine point eight three tons.
I don't know if you took the dump truck in there and didn't use the roll-up dumpsters or. Last thing, just to comment, credit cards. Do you guys know of the total bill, twenty-five point four percent is approved by us? The other thing is utility for PDSD center. That's all I have.
Brian, do you want to make a motion with holding back that wide and see the payment?
Where?
Yes.
Just quick on lot for street traffic paint. I said that's with the all the new stuff going in, or is that just spring stuff that is a little higher than usual?
I don't think the bill says it just says paint.
I'm going to pull this traffic.
Why it really got a little.
Yeah, so there was seventy-one of the white and sixty-nine of the yellow. And I can ask Brian on that one too.
Okay.
Normally they don't start doing crosswalks till summertime when they're part-time.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It's kind of high for this time of year. If you're stocking up.
I make a motion to approve the bills as payable, subject to withholding on the Russell construction until we get clarification. Paying retainage and the data to get that clarification and release it if not behold.
Okay. So that would be if the formal changes.
Motion by Dr. Second by Peters to approve those payable withholding back to payment to Russell construction for clarification. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name is ice habit. Consideration approval for liquor license for the fund station.
There may be several inside.
They are.
I make motion to approve, subject to voting their grand shot insurance. Imagine that's H D I global.
Looks like that policy expires in November twenty-three.
And on the front page, the effective date of that.
I do know Jody says they don't let it go through if things aren't right. But sometimes there's issues with the clear for work.
You have a motion to hear a second with clarification. Motion by Dr. Second by Collins to approve renewal for fund station license upon clarification. All those in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Name is ice habit. Consideration to approve the liquor license renewal for Casey's general store. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Second by Peters to approve Casey's general store liquor license renewal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ice habit.
Because like that, I think the police department has done a good job over the past few years doing very little periodic checks and making sure all the stuff is going to hold true. So.
Number six, eight. The third and final reading order is two thousand twenty-three dash twelve rezoning property of two thirty South Ninth Avenue from C one neighborhood commercial to a C three general commercial district. Give remarks. Has anybody called in on that?
We've received no comments, man.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Jeff on the zoning, the final third reading?
Same format as last time. Very soon. I didn't get any since that system.
I make most of the third and final reading. Orders, twenty twenty-three dash twelve.
Second.
Call.
Peter.
Aye.
Duffery.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Chief.
Aye.
The third and final reading order is two thousand twenty-three dash twelve. An awareness rezoning the property at two thirty South Ninth Avenue from C one neighborhood commercial to C three general commercial passes. Six B update from Patty on the first and Leclerc intersection.
Thank you. Free for shorter than last time. In the last two weeks, in fact, it's here, they spent three percent of their time. They completed thirteen percent of the pavement and overall they added about seven percent of the planning construction. So if you sell the graph, it's still trending at the same rate upward. They are still working hard. You saw the picture we showed to kind of accelerate what came on the ground last year, but it's been added this spring. Second Street opened the traffic last week. As of earlier today, the south entrance to the quarter whitey building is now open. That'll become the official signs detour tomorrow. And over the course of the next three days, that ground will be either way on the north side will disappear as it consumed by new concrete. So I'm still on track to say that a minimum east-west traffic can return to Leclerc Road by the end of the month. Plus, any good weather, if you've seen it lately, they're placing topsoil. They're finishing up the landing gate port on the south side. And that's really their focus from pavement standpoint, finish the actual intersection, which there's only a few boards love to do that. And then they'll keep working and working with street pavement, but they really want to get everything top of Leclerc button down. So all the trail, all the sidewalk, all the landscaping dog. And they're on track to do that. There's still final completion date before they would hit the related damages is middle to late July. That's a moving target based on weather. But realistically, the payment will be complete before that day. If everything continues on current trajectory. At the end of the point.
Are you comfortable they're going to bring that in?
Uh, nope. They did it once. It failed.
They didn't like the result, so they did it again.
Yep. And they don't do it themselves. They don't have the ability. So it's going to ask, that has to come in to do it.
So the same company will do the second test.
Presumed as well.
Yeah, they just have to be DOT certified. There's only a handful of those folks around because it's a specialized test.
What was that first test done?
Last fall after that payment window. And it won't appreciably change.
Well, stop bringing in for Leclerc East West on anyways.
Yep.
Craig, when you said they're going to open up that south part of quarters there, are there going to be barricades that let, so that will they be limited to just go onto West Leclerc Road and come in on West Leclerc Road? They won't be able to cross the intersection.
Correct. And they're out there right now. They've got the type three, the big the bigger, the orange boards. Those are three of the entire intersections and they go to the big ones, the orange cones as you go. I drove it before this meeting. It's pretty coherent. So signs will move officially tomorrow morning sometime. And then, like I said, a few days later, they'll shut down the north one. If it becomes an issue having both in both entrances open, we can shut the north one down ahead of time, but realistically, it's not a shortcut to anywhere. So there's probably no reason why people will cut through. And from Whitey's standpoint, everybody else, they just liked the idea of having more access for longer, which I can appreciate it. So.
That's still on by the heartbeat and it is. And they probably appreciate if we got traffic up their front yard.
Agreed.
So whether we put them at one at that exits or entrance we currently have going into Whitey's quarter and one at Wade Street or somewhere just block that on.
Yeah, we'll physically, they'll physically remove a portion of Wade Street. And so it will be a work in progress for another month.
Does anybody else have any more questions for Greg about the intersection update? Thank you, Greg. Seven eight consideration approving your recommendation from the economic development board to offer a TIF development agreement. The real call for an annual property tax debate based on the four point three million assessment valuation for the remainder of the permit term on the TIF district. Do you explain that a little bit?
Uh, sure. So the application was included in the packet. They were asking for a hundred percent and there's representatives from R O Co. here this evening to. The original tip application asked for a hundred percent rebate on any improvements over the one one twenty-two valuation of three point two million for ten years. Our current TIF district expires in the fiscal year thirty-two, thirty-three. So the improvements were finished this year. They'd have eight years of rebates. They're finished next year. There'd be seven years of rebates. We did a conversation. So R O Co. was willing to agree to pay legal fees to establish a new district. And I created a map, presented that to the development committee. That was discussed. Part of the reasoning why they didn't choose to go that route right now was that they weren't sure the availability of any of the land around that area and they didn't want to be in the same year, ten years from now and now it's very difficult district. So they were they instead of getting it paid for right now, they'd rather wait until there's actually interest in the area and then take another look at it at that time. So what the board ended up ultimately coming back with as a recommendation was that a rebate on evaluation of four point three million dollars until the expiration of the current urban renewal district. They came up with that figure by taking three point two million valuation for one one twenty-two and subtracting that from the current valuation from one one twenty-three of seven point five million dollars.
Thank you, Jeff. Excuse me, we have some people here. You guys are welcome to deliver. Which one is to go first, sir?
Sure. I thank everyone for the time. We appreciate it. And thank you, gentlemen, for spending a bunch of time on this as well. Obviously, this is a little bit, the recommendation is a little bit different than we had applied for and we appreciate consideration whatsoever, but since the time that we've made the application, we had talked about a seven and a half million dollar bill on this property. And as we sit here today, we're more likely in the twelve and a half million dollar range. Is that correct? On top of an already increased valuation from three point two million to seven and a half million. So what we're talking about is a twenty million dollar swing in the valuation of a property inclusive of construction, which is a little bit different than a four point five million dollar suggestion from we also have volunteered to pay for the extension of the of the district. And we own land in the district that's available for construction at any point in time, right? So we can build approximately one hundred and eighty thousand square foot building on the land to the south of four hundred south fourteen street today. Assuming our plans at RealCo and if John Dear wishes to remain in that area or in an adjacent building, we will likely build on that property within the time period of the eight million dollar or eight and fifteen year remainder of the district. And we have, R O Co.'s been around forever and I don't want to bore you with some of the information here, but this is Craig Wagner. Craig owns R O Co. Steve Eaton is one of our real estate partners. Craig's family's own R O Co. since seventy-eight. It's a back Plaza base business. Great growth trajectory. We currently have three locations in the Illinois Quad Cities and this would be, we would consolidate those into Eldridge and Eldridge would be our new headquarters. If you want to add anything, we're happy to take questions.
Yeah, take questions if you have any questions. I think I will say one thing. I think if you communicate with the city of Bednorth people and Rock Island, we're strong stewards of the communities that we're in. Give back a lot, participate a lot, run a good, clean state, quality operator.
And while I will say, so we have, we the building's three hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet as it stands here today. And I understand that there might have been some hesitancy on the committees in the committee's mind based on new construction. We're adding fifty-eight thousand square feet to this facility. Right? Which is a pretty substantial addition to the building and then substantially improvements to the to the exterior of the building and basically it's going to be a if completed, would be a a great first sight to see as we come into the city of Eldridge from that from head down to the other. So I understand this existing structure. Twelve and a half million dollar investment in that structure. And it will be, I think, would be something you'd be proud to have. The renderings. Those point the entrance with Eldridge, it's going to grow this bit shine and herb appeal from the highway and every side. I don't know if you've ever seen it.
Yeah, they do look nice. And eighty-one chapters, which is, this was the type of.
You know, twenty or thirty good people out there we hire.
That's all so deep.
Got a good student base out here.
What, friend?
My interpretation was a little different from Jeff's on the outcome of that meeting. There was issues with when Bodden said that the valuation was between six and seven million. Peterson bought, cut it down to the three point one, which it currently is now, which is no issue to these gentlemen. County assessor is raising it back up to seven point five. They paid twelve for it. And that caused some confusion. Setting the limit at three, knowing they paid twelve for it. Now, the four billion plus they're talking about doing was not the minimum assessment. We'll get into that in a minute. That was what they estimated the increase would be for the improvements, the fifty-eight thousand foot and then was my take now. A minimum assessments, we can't set after that HB seven nineteen just passed. So the county assessor sets those. If we come up with a value towards that, he still has to sign off on it. When you pass, that never has had to happen. But there's, there's two different issues here. One is are you asking for set the minimum value at four when you pay twelve for it? And the county's got it at seven this year. Are you asking for hundred percent rebate on the four whatever million that'll take for the improvements and the addition?
So I guess the result, and we have had the opportunity to see. Others that would also really say, I appreciate that time. This, after those conversations, we reached out to Lena Waterman, who's our legal counsel, and this was their suggestion. Based on their understanding of the way that assessment could be. Right, see? So if they misunderstood that, I apologize, but that's their understanding. So the request was to limit it at the three and a half million. That may or may not be possible. I do see the suggestion from the committee. I'm not sure that that is going to be the revised valuation of the property based on the construction that will take place. At this point, if we're going to spend twelve point five million dollars of construction, I doubt that the valuation increase is going to be limited to four point three million.
But if you don't do the construction, when the body is limited to the number.
That, that's correct. If we don't do that.
It's on a building. The county assessor has that seven point one.
I understand.
That was some of the confusion. And hopefully you're appealing your taxes on which pay for it now. There would be opportunities to apply for they spoke of future expansion. You know, if you get this tip right now on four point three, you decide to do something bigger later on, and there's nothing that said you couldn't fight for it.
Sure.
You know, something for that.
I appreciate that, but at this point, we're not even, we're not even getting what we're requesting first time. Regardless of the dollar amount, it's not a ten-year duration.
The issue with setting up a new district. The laws have changed in the last ten years. So now when you establish a TIF district, the day you incur debt on it starts the clock. Old days, you could have a big area and you didn't start that twenty-year time period until you incurred debt in that district. So not knowing what's going to go on around there. Then one question I brought up, if you're asking for X, X dollars, does it really matter if you get those X dollars in acres or tens, as long as you get those X dollars? Because it was presented that you definitely wanted a ten-year.
Well, we had had some conversations where that seemed like if if we've put the bill for that, that was impossible. So I thought that might have been the path of waste resistance.
But then it starts the clock because if we did it, we'd put a big area, not knowing that if that area, if those are even willing to sell it or something.
Sure.
Would be possible to share Lena with Lena by Waterman's opinion on that new vault with, with our city attorney. That way it stays confidential. And then we can take a look at it so you get clarification on that.
Absolutely.
I believe Jeff, Brian, when you also agreed that the board said this they're open for discussion. We we usually just do this on a completely new project. It's just starting from the dirt. So there's some confusion there too on an existing thing to, there's no model to go compare this to. So this was basically started.
I'm supposed to work.
Yeah, we're just going to do it right.
Yeah.
Well, if you guys would want to take that information that Brian just mentioned from your attorney and get with the city attorney on that. Then once they get together, then we can get the economic development committee board back together. And then the city attorney can discuss whatever you guys can come yourselves. And then that would probably be the next step, wouldn't it?
Well, we would have to review it. You know, the payment from our attorney.
Right.
I don't know if I have to go back to you, you know, if they were willing to work with them. I mean, and they're just a advisory to the council. At the end of the day, it's going to come to council and that way it doesn't prolong the timeframe for these gentleman.
Yeah, certainly, we don't want to negate anything, but obviously a lot of things involved here and we just want to make sure. obviously, a lot of things involved here and we just want to make sure that, you know, everything is koshered and everybody's best interest. Like I said, it's a little bit different with the existing or new and stuff like that, but certainly don't take this as a any reticence on the part of the council.
Oh, seven nineteen when you passed.
Me too.
And we are under a little bit of a time, I mean, we're under a, there's a time period, construction time period, you know, tenant time period.
That is our, we, I mean, I think we have some timetables. We have to hit John Deere right in order to make it work. As well, as well as ourselves, or it doesn't work out. So.
Well, we're perfectly willing to, you know, work within those at all possible and I would think it would, unless you're talking next week or something, I would think would have a problem. I was just, I'm just hopeful maybe we could do it, or at least have some conversations ahead of your next council meeting. Is that reasonable? After Lainey Waterman's sitting, so I'll return.
We could have the committee hold. Yeah, and Nevada, I can make the call tomorrow morning, find out which attorney they'd like to take a look at this.
Sure.
Uh, we can get with him in the morning, okay? Have that before you have to go on. So I know there's been some delays because of staff changes and I apologize.
We may want to run it by anyone who's.
That's who I'd like to call, so they have a specialist to address. They, they can turn it over.
They're the firm that establishes all of the TIF districts and documents, or so, and local, we, we have more than one city attorney.
Okay.
They're quite, it's a great question.
Thank you. Like I said, that can be, you don't have to wait for two weeks for the next one to get in. Like Brian said, if you need to hold, you're sooner than if this progress in format context are gonna make it move forward. Thank you.
I think I make a motion to table that to the future council.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Green, second by Collins to table the uh, RealCo economic development TIF application for now, so further information. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Building for the report. Jeff?
So this is just a report we do monthly. We run all the reports that, or one report for all the permits we've issued during the month. So you can see if there is one single family, one commercial, the plumbing, electrical, mechanical are all dipped out because that is the majority of our permits we pull. And then in the other side of the room, like that. And then on the end of your, the total piece.
It'd be hard to add a bottom line on last year's totals, so we can gauge how we're running compared to previous year.
Absolutely.
Seven C budget report.
So the budget report is just, you're gonna have updated information as I understand it from August was the last time I think that we had with otherwise known as the sin clerk's report, which your help, it's been listed previously on the agenda, so you're gonna have that breakdown from August up until now, so we're getting about seven or eight months worth of information in here. Uh, there are a couple of values that we need to check into. I've got Tony looking into some of that too, where um, we've got our sewer account at six point five million. So that's what it shows in our system, but I think there's some different breakdowns and there are the revenues and expenditures that have us sitting probably more around um, one point five to two million. So we'll get some clarification on that and have that out in the next report.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, Brian.
Nevada, can you pause a little? Break down this report, please. You have general, but can you break down the departments within the general police department? That kind of stuff.
Yes. If we can break them down to departmental.
And then we really don't need to see utility. That's utility board scope.
Yeah, Brian. Thanks. That, that will conclude the regular part. We are going to be going into closed session. Uh, before we do that, if you, government class would like to come forward, we can sign in documents, make my help.